I'm sorry, I don't hear nobody. Well, hello, everybody. I'm not sure who's moderating right now. Guess it's probably gonna be me.
I just need to get the YouTube Live set up and then the start record button and I'll transfer the hosting to Mr. President.
Oh, I didn't know. Okay.
Okay, Randy. Hi, Mr. Williams.
Hello.
How are you, sir?
With yourself.
I'm okay, thank you. As long as I got my coffee, I'm doing well all the time.
Hopefully, that's coffee?
Uh, I got my coffee. I'm unmuted. I'm not on a ta- I'm not on my tablet. I'm on the laptop. So my fingers don't work.
Oh, okay, I understand.
I gotta use the arrow. Everybody else is muted.
Yeah, I see.
What the heck? Do they not know that we're at a meeting?
I'm not sure. We only have two.
President, you have your-
Carmen's here.
I'm sorry?
Carmen is here.
Hello, everybody.
Oh, alright.
Hello, sir, how are you?
I'm excellent. So, Mr. Martin, are we ready? It's about three minutes to six o'clock.
Yes, we are. And I've transferred the host to your profile.
Okay, do we have a call? So, one, two.
Dorothy and Patrice are here, so we've got enough.
Okay, awesome.
We've got five. Where's your clerk?
I don't know. Okay, awesome. Awesome, awesome, awesome.
Hello, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Hello.
How are you?
Extremely busy, but fine, thank you. Carolyn, did you get my email?
I did, but you know, that's something you would have to mention. Did you talk to the Council President about that?
I sent everybody the email, but I'll have to announce it during the meeting. I sent it to everybody, remember?
You know, I happened to notice it was dated 2029. I guess 29 years from now, we can acknowledge it. Yeah, the Word document.
On the email that I sent you, Councilman, it's the amendment.
The Word document that says 2029? Yes.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-nine years from now, could recognize it.
I apologize. Yep, I see that now.
Whoa, wait.
I don't know how they got, how they got written in. Should be 2020.
Well, it's just a push of the wrong button.
Yeah, I apologize.
Okay, six o'clock. So, I'm gonna ask everybody to mute themselves, and then we're gonna get started. So, we're gonna call to order the 150th, 45th session of the 10th Council Formal Meeting, March 31st, 2020, at 6:00 PM. Call to order invocation by Pro Tem Carter.
You know, I guess I should always be ready. I've never done an invocation before, but, uh, well, to all my fellows, I will say, may the Lord guide us and bless us and keep us safe and, and let us have this meeting with a lot of decorum. Amen.
Amen. Alright, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, roll call, Mr. Doyle.
Carter.
Present.
Miller. Petula.
Present.
Taylor Burks.
Present.
Waterman.
Here.
Williams.
Present.
President, you have a call.
Alright, I need an authorization to excuse Councilwoman Miller.
I'm moved.
Support.
I've just been moved and supported. Any discussion? Roll call.
Petula.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Okay, um,
And Miller.
Oh, she's here. Okay, so we withdraw that vote, which brings us to amendments to an approval of the agenda. I would ask that items number three, four, five, 11, 12 be moved to next week.
So that was three, four, five, and 12?
Yes.
May I ask why?
Because what I want to do after this is have a discussion about moving our electronic meetings to 12 o'clock noon because of the Corona issue, so we can have time to go through these items.
What does the Corona issue have to do with moving until noon?
Moving the meeting to noon, so we can unpack these things. That's all I'm saying.
Why can't we attack those things at six o'clock?
We can, and you will have an opportunity to talk about that when we get there. So, I'm not to debate it. That's what I asked. And so, people can decide if they agree or disagree.
Mr. President, one of the items that you were moving is three. That was the discussion about move changing the meeting time from six.
No, that's a special, that's a special presentation from the mayor about the Corona update. That's what that says.
No, no, no. You don't have the latest agenda.
No.
Okay, I need, well, I need the latest agenda, because this is the one I got. So if you can reach it.
You had asked, you had asked for some changes to be made to the, uh,
Okay, if you could send me the new agenda, Mr. Doyle, that'd be great.
Okay.
You should have gotten a copy on Friday.
Deputy Mayor.
I'm looking to amend the agenda. I did send to the city council and to the city clerk.
President, I sent it, Council President, I put it in the chat for you.
Is that, did you, did you say something?
Yeah, he said he put it. I was just saying, I just sent it, I said, I put it in the chat.
Okay.
The agenda, updated.
Yeah, the item, right. I did add the Ottawa Towers contract extension amendment. I respectfully requested the city council on the agenda by adding that item.
I didn't receive it, but.
Yeah, but you just did it, Deputy Mayor, because I've been checking my email all day, and what you loaded down, what, a couple hours ago?
I sent it around, around three o'clock, yes.
That's what I thought.
But it is, this is a study session, so we can't discuss. I'm sorry, I apologize. Oh, I apologize.
And I don't have it. I'm just noting for the record, I don't have it. This is Monique.
I don't have it either. I received it. Excuse me. I said, I received mine at 4:06, and everybody's on it.
Well, that's fine.
I'm not on it.
Yeah, but that, an hour before meeting, it's not adequate time for somebody to read documents and then go and get ready to go air.
Council, I understand. I just respectfully request, because we are under some very, very, very difficult time constraint.
Well, you normally are, Deputy Mayor. That's the same old, same old.
No, Your Honor, this is very important.
Brass, get this meeting under control, brass.
Listen, I'm trying to mute people, but this is clearly where we gotta go. Yeah, so I'm gonna have to mute everybody. So, there we go. So now, now we're fine. So, again, I was asking, and I'm looking for the new agenda, but I still don't see it. Mr. Ringo said he put it in the chat, but my chat hasn't popped up. So,
I sent it to your, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I sent it to your email.
Okay, I'm gonna check that right now, and then we can have a discussion on these things. So. Okay, I'm still looking for it.
I sent it to the one Carmen at Pontiac, that email. That's the one I sent it to.
Okay, yeah, I'm waiting for it to pop up. It hasn't, it hasn't populated yet, so. Okay, if you could just read me the items, Mr. Doyle, so we don't hold up this meeting. So what, what is item number three on the agenda?
So, item number three on the agenda is a discussion, City Council changing the time of the City Council meeting. City Council meetings on Tuesdays from 6:00 PM to 12:00 PM noon until the pandemic is lifted. Then recognition of elected officials, agenda address. Then the resolutions, Department of Public Works, number four, resolution to approve contract with the Detroit Regional Convention Authority to operate the Phoenix Center Parking Deck operations in the amount of 19,000 commencing March 1st, 2020. Item five is for finance, resolution to authorize the mayor to recruit candidates for the vacant finance director position between the salary range of 110,000 to 120,000. Six, from the mayor's office, resolution to approve the calendar schedule for the timing of performance as provided by construction, is amended to reflect March 3rd, 2020, as the date approval of the architectural and engineering services May 10th, 2020, as the estimated date for completion of core design services in July 15th, 2020, as the estimated date for completion of bid packages outlining preliminary scope of work. Seven is resolution to vacate a portion of Highwood Boulevard right away between Third and Fourth Avenue. And then the ordinance from the planning is the introduction of an ordinance, the City of Pontiac Tax Exempt Ordinance for Glenwood Senior Apartments located at 191 North Glenwood Avenue. This is the first reading. This is the wallet communities request for a pilot for Glenwood Senior Apartments. Nine is communications from the mayor, status update on census 2020. And trash collection update is 10. 11 is notice regarding services provided by Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner. And then 12 and 13 are the special presentations. 12 is the Corona's virus update. And 13 is the legal update, City of Pontiac versus Mayor Water. And then public comment.
So, I would ask that the agenda, and I'm gonna unmute everybody, please raise your hand in order to speak as soon as I can get the button together, for whatever reason. It's not acting correctly. But I'm gonna unmute everybody, and then then I would ask that items number nine, 12, 13 be moved to next week. And so, so is there a move and support to do that?
I move.
Sorry, we'll do this.
You need a second. You got a move by Councilwoman Taylor Burks, but you need a second.
Is there a second?
My machine, I don't know if you can hear, my machine is cutting up. Yes, I guess.
Okay, oh, yeah.
That was a second, I want.
Okay, alright, now, we need a vote on, a discussion on the amendments to the agenda.
Mr. President, sorry. Is it for March 12th?
What? I'm confused, Pro Tem.
The minutes, are these from March 12th?
No, no, we're still on amendments to the agenda. We haven't got to the,
Okay.
But yeah, that needs to be changed also, but yes. Yeah, that's a typo, so. But yeah, we're on the agenda. Any discussion on the amendments? Alright, seeing none, roll call.
Petula.
Yeah.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Now?
No.
No.
Okay, amendments passed. Now we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move.
Support.
Alright, it's been moved and supported. Any city council discussion? Roll call.
Okay. Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
No.
Miller.
No.
Petula.
No.
The agenda as amended was not approved.
Okay, so what do we deny? Yeah, so what do we deny?
You could, uh,
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Clerk. I muted you by accident. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm saying that you can put a motion to approve the agenda as it was submitted, approved, because right now you haven't approved any agenda. But the amendments, the amended agenda, that failed.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, but I was muted, so I wasn't able to.
Well, then I have to make a motion to second it if Mary made it to approve it.
Okay, any discussion?
Do you want me to call a roll?
I was waiting, I was waiting for discussion from council people, no. So I don't hear any city council discussion, call a roll.
Waterman. Waterman. Did I hear? I didn't hear. Is Waterman still in the? Council. Councilmember Waterman?
I don't see her name on the list.
I don't, um, I don't either, okay. Williams?
No.
No. Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
I'm sorry.
That was a yes, Councilwoman?
Yes, that was a yes.
Okay. Petula.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
That would be like.
We keep getting, I keep getting a bunch of feedback. I'm sorry. It's like somebody else.
And these are the things that everybody can say. Excellent.
Oh.
Okay, Councilwoman Taylor Burks.
I gotta unmute her.
Okay.
I said yes.
Say yes, okay. And I now see, I thought I saw Council, oh yeah, Councilwoman Waterman. She's back on the call, Mr. President.
Yeah, I just unmuted her, well, tried to unmute her. So, she's self-muted, so.
Oh, okay, so then, so, four A's, one A, so it passes, and then it's, oh, here is Councilwoman Waterman. So, because we're voting on the agenda, the original agenda as is, Councilwoman Waterman. Didn't that, she's gone again, huh?
Okay, can we, there's enough votes to move on.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Let's move on to the minutes.
So, actually, Mr. President, the minute should, on the agenda should read March 24th, 2020.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 24th?
I approve.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Yes.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes are approved.
Alright, which brings up.
Did you get the agenda, Mr. President, because the next item is?
Yeah, I got it, but you can read the next item, so we can skip this alone.
So, Subcommittee Report is Finance, the March 3rd, 2020.
Okay. Councilwoman Waterman, do you wanna make a report?
You can just review the minutes. I'm good.
Okay, which brings us to item number three. I asked that this item be added to the agenda because of the Corona. Our meetings were originally set at 10:00. Allow people that were working to actually come to the meetings, and that's why we have them at 6:00. But because we are on quarantine into at least April 13th, I would ask that our next couple meetings be moved to 12:00 noon on a Tuesday.
I move.
Support.
Alright, it's been moved and supported. Who, who, who supported it?
Can, can I ask a question to the clerk, whether or not you can do that, because there's no resolution on that?
Right, that's what I was about to say, wasn't it?
It was discussion.
Okay, so what do we need to do?
Councilman Williams, I do have a question. My hand is raised.
I was, I was waiting for the move in a second, and then we're gonna have discussion. So, I'm just trying to get the protocol, but if they're telling us, if they're telling me that we need a resolution first, and I don't want to have a motion where we can't take action, so.
So somebody would have to put forth a resolution. Do we need to, and I guess this is a question to the city attorney, do we need to suspend the rules to add the resolution, add a resolution to change the time of the meetings?
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, that's correct. Clerk Doyle, because they already approved the agenda, and this is changing it, we just need to suspend the rules and then move to add this on.
Okay, so I need a motion to suspend the rules.
Support.
So, was that you, I warned you?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Petula.
No.
Taylor Burks.
Yes.
Okay, the rules have been suspended.
I didn't tell you.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Alright.
It's so much easier when I can see these people in person. So, now we need a motion to add a resolution to move the next two council meetings to 12:00 noon on a Tuesday.
I move.
So that's the meeting for 4:07 and 4:14.
I move. Mr. President, when are you going to let us speak?
I'm gonna let you speak after it's been moved and seconded, then I open it up for discussion. I know you're itching to speak, but it's a process.
So you need a second, Mr. President.
I understand. Councilwoman Petula jumped in, so it was moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, now's their discussion.
My hand has been raised for this.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Petula.
I cannot be at a noon meeting. I am a, an essential caregiver, and I do work continuously during this time. Well, I am one of the essential ones.
Okay, is there a time that works better for you?
I have worked my schedule, so I'm working from 12:00 until 5:00, so I'm available for 6:00 meetings. Unless you want to meet at 10:00 AM.
I don't have a problem with 10:00 AM, but.
Because when we leave, when we leave, our meetings sometimes run over. That's what I'm saying. I will be leaving here at 11:30 because I do have to work. I have to be to my clients at 12:00.
Okay, what's the, what's the pleasure of the body to have a 10:00 meeting? Because I'm fine with it.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem. 10:00 is fine.
I do.
Is it Councilwoman Miller?
Yes.
Okay, so what's your thoughts?
Leave at 12:00 and vote. That's it. I just vote whatever for you, and I go along with whatever.
Mr. President, I will at this time ask to be excused from all meetings until April 30th, when the coronavirus is lifted. Because that is what the president said it for, until Sun, on Sunday, till April 30th. Because that is what the president said it for, until Sun, on Sunday, till April thirtieth. I want to be excused from each meeting if you're gonna have them at noon, because I am not able to make them. As I stated, I am one of the essential caregivers and have a responsibility to my seniors who are at all risks.
Okay, um, can we, can we cut the baby and move the meetings to five o'clock?
I could do that.
Why? Why? I mean, either, miss, why?
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to accommodate as many people as possible.
You don't have to do that, you just go ahead and vote.
Okay, all right, so the vote has been called for a roll call? Before block?
No. Mr. President, if I might, I mean, in all due respect, this is her job and she's asking, so I think we need to all try to, uh, to amend, so everybody can be at these meetings and stuff, so if not, we can keep it at six. But that's her job, she's talking about her job.
Okay.
So, if you want to amend it?
What, what, what's, what's, what's your thoughts?
I have no problem with.
No, 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 I, I, I heard you, uh, council, uh, woman Waterman, I'm asking the rest of the council.
Ten o'clock is fine with me.
Okay, uh, councilwoman Miller had an issue with ten o'clock, so I'm just saying, do we need to leave?
I'm just one person, I'm just one person, I'm good.
Uh, uh, listen, we only have six council members right now, so, um, I just need all the council members to be able to attend. So, the, if, if we just need to leave it, because this was my idea to move the meeting, because I thought it would be.
We should, we should move, we, Mr. President, we should move it, because I think, to my knowledge, we're the only ones that's meeting.
I, I, I agree with that.
Everybody has to shut down.
The, the charter is requiring us to.
There are ones that are meeting, because there is another community that's meeting today, and that's Detroit.
Well, they're, they're, they're not, okay, so, anyway, um, so, do y'all just want to leave the meeting at six o'clock and then we can just, we can just go with that, if that's amenable to everybody? I, I just need all six council members right now, so.
Right now, my whole schedule is built around six o'clock.
Okay, uh, Pres, leave, put it at ten.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, uh, uh, Pro Tem Carter, can you meet at ten?
No, that's what I'm saying, I'm, I got my schedule around six, five or six, not in the mornings.
Okay, so, um. Now, if, if, if it's a six, let's leave it at six, if it's gonna be a nighttime call. I really think we should be canceling these meetings in general, but that's a different discussion.
Oh, well, what about changing the date for the next two weeks? Maybe it's, it's, it's a different day better to meet at ten, uh, Carter? Or is it, is that way every day?
Every day.
Okay.
Much better than the change, because everybody is off.
Okay, we, well, we try, that's all you can do.
Okay, so I just. Okay, so, so, um, I need the people who made the motion. So, we can leave it at six o'clock. Without.
So, you would need, uh, um, councilwoman Taylor Burks to withdraw her motion and, uh, councilwoman Waterman to withdraw her second.
So be it.
Yep, whatever.
Okay, um, we can move on to the next item, Mr. Clerk, if you can read that.
Okay, I may, I'll point that.
All right, um, the next item is recognition of elected officials. Their, um, agenda address, no, and we don't receive any agenda address, um, cards. So, uh, resolutions, we're on item four, Department of Public Works, resolution to approve contract with the Detroit Regional Convention Authority to operate the Phoenix Center parking deck operations in the amount of nineteen thousand, commencing March first, twenty twenty.
Okay, who's speaking for administration?
Uh, good, good, good evening, everyone, this is Dan Ringo, um. I, before I think we get started with that, I think we're gonna, I think someone is, I may have jumped the gun, I believe there we are reading of a letter.
Yeah, um, is it related, I, I mean, is it the vote on this item? So, I think that, um, John Clark sent something about them withdrawing this motion, so I didn't know why it was still on the agenda.
Right, it's, okay, okay, so, yeah, so, excuse me, so, correct, uh, council president, um, but I believe what the deputy mayor was requesting was a, um, revision to the agenda to include, uh, the resolution to allow the mayor to enter into an agreement with, um, North Bay Drywall for an extension of the current agreement to maintain the Phoenix Center, uh, parking garage, because as you know, we have to remain compliant with the settlement agreement, and that expires, um, I believe today, so we, it will be for April first until November first, so we have a resolution before the council to allow that, so we at least remain compliant, because we were not able to, uh, get approved the agreement we brought last week, which was, uh, for the council to allow the mayor to enter an agreement with the Detroit Regional Convention Facility Authority. So, our backup, our backup plan is to at least be able to remain compliant to the settlement agreement and extend the current agreement that we have with Ottawa Towers, or, or North Bay Drywall, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, Attorney Sharp?
The problem I have with it is, like I said, I didn't receive it, so I haven't read it, so you would, you know, um.
Yeah.
You'd be proceeding, I, I mean, and then, you know, I, I, I'm not trying to continue to belabor the point, but of course, you know, this agreement was completely different from the agreement that was before you last week, but nevertheless, I have not read it, so I can't give you any, um, input on that.
If I might jump in, councilman, uh, this is John Bannister, that agreement, the agreement we're looking to extend is the same agreement as we had, as you had approved last year, I believe it was in December, it's the same extension you approved last year. So, it's nothing new, we're staying on the same cost and the same, same agreement in order to.
And then maybe I just haven't read it, that's all.
Right.
Like, I did forty-two.
My, my issue is this.
At six fifteen.
Yeah, when, when John Clark, um, sent out the letter about the other company withdrawing or whatever, um, that letter for, um, the extension, um, needed to be sent to us at that same time, and that did not happen. So, um, and I guess how long is the extension for, because like, like, uh, Attorney Sharp said, I haven't read it, so.
The extension is till November or October thirty-first of this year, and unfortunately, when we heard of Detroit Regional withdrawing, we had to actually go and negotiate with, um, North Bay Drywall, and they're in California, so it, it takes a little bit of time to get those, you know, going.
Okay.
And we can't enter into this agreement next Tuesday?
Also, the, uh, the contract we have with North, North Bay right now expires today, that's why I wanted to make the amendment to allow that extension to occur.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm asking you, um, and you just didn't answer my question, Deputy Mayor, so excuse me if I come across a little cranky. I just said, can we vote on this contract next Tuesday?
Council President?
If I may, oh, so. Mr. President?
Yes, Pro Tem Carter?
Yeah, the problem I had, and I had in the very beginning, that this was a, a illegal contract, and it's, it's actually an authority, it's not just a little, uh, it's not a little company, so, it's, 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 it's actually state law that everybody, that somebody was trying to ram it through for us to vote on it. It is not no independent little company. This is a regional authority, just like the Great Lakes Water Authority, that was pure BS for it to even be included on our agenda and to put it on as if it's a simple item we can just vote on. This, uh, regional authority has all kind of power, even close, even with taxation on the residents. I think the people that were the boss should have been, uh, uh, they should actually lose their law license for actually bringing this stuff up.
So, Pro Tem Car, yeah, I, I, Pro Tem Carter, just to, for clarity's sake, uh, they have removed their offer, um, so for whatever reason, uh, they've removed their offer, so the Detroit Regional is no longer on the table as a contract.
I understand, but at the same time, all the agents that are involved are still, are still involved with, with, with this finagling of the city.
Yeah, and Council President, if I could respond, because the Pro Tem has just said I should lot, lose my license, um, over this agreement. The reality is, we've explained a couple times about the benefits that that agreement did bring to the city, and it was a good idea. Nevertheless, after the last meeting in which, um, councilwoman Taylor Burks told, uh, the presenter, the president of COBO to shut up, and then Mr. Pro Tem Carter actually swore at him, um, they said their board directed him to no longer deal with us, and so that kind of left us in the lurch, and we were able to negotiate in a short period of time that agreement, so that, that's with the current vendor that does the work, so that we can maintain compliance under the settlement agreement. This is really important.
Mr. President.
And it's really basic, and so this is to ensure we maintain the obligations under the agreement, and I ask that you please move forward with this, because this would just be, you know, another potential for them to assert that we can be breached in contract.
Mr. President.
Uh, Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burks, yes.
I have never, ever told anyone to shut up since I have been sitting up there, and I don't appreciate that being put out there. I have never done that, never, ever.
Okay, can, can we?
Can't tell the truth, don't say nothing, okay, because you're getting really pissed off.
Okay, I'm about to, I'm about to mute everybody in a second, um, uh, I just want to stick to the germane points of, uh, because that's not on our agenda today, um, I asked the question, could we vote on this next Tuesday? And I haven't got an answer from the city attorney, the deputy mayor, or anybody else.
May I, may I respond?
Go ahead, um, Deputy Mayor.
The deputy mayor is, is unmuted.
Okay, I'm trying to unmute her, um, right now, so. I gotta find her.
There we go, I got it, I got it, can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, sir, yes, the answer is yes, we would like for you to ask today, and as the city attorney mentioned, if we don't have this matter, then we would be in violation of our, of our current, current settlement. And we don't want to give, give them any leeway.
I, I, I heard you, I heard your point, um, what I asked was, could we vote on it next Tuesday? And so I was hoping I would get an answer to my question.
Well, obviously, city council, with all due respect, we, we can do that, but it is not recommended. We believe that the action should be taken today.
Okay.
Doing so would necessarily mean breach the contract for a week, that's not an option as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, Attorney Sharp? Yes.
I just want to say, it's interesting that, um, you know, you'll be out of compliance, but yet, again, the other contract did not even contain the same terms whatsoever, it was a management agreement and not a maintenance, so I, I, I really wonder how you're going to be in compliance with that agreement had you gone, uh, voted on that, but thank you.
Okay, any other council people want to speak?
My hand is back up.
My hand's up.
Okay, um, I'll go with, I will go with councilwoman Peetla, and then I will go with councilwoman Miller.
We received a text message or an email, yes, we did, from John Clark this weekend, and it does state that the Detroit Metro pulled out, and we, they now negotiated with North Bay to continue this, so we don't come into non-compliance issues being that it expires, I believe, today, this, at midnight. This way, we go into it with North Bay, we're already not going to meet our obligations that we signed for in November. We need to keep forward with as much as we can up until this time, I mean, I'm just gonna ask the council to please, let's honor the words that we held to the courts in two thousand and seventeen, that was November the first that we agreed to that, and yes, I have heard people tell people to shut up while they're at the podium, and that very well may have happened, which is why Detroit Metro pulled out, I mean, facts are fact, you can't deny it, you can't deny it, but it does happen, thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute everybody, I'm, I'm listening, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, because I can't even hear anything right now, so, I'm gonna mute everybody. And then I'm gonna unmute, um. If councilwoman Miller can speak now?
Yes, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President, I, I'm gonna be very brief, uh, I don't vote in on anything that I haven't read. I haven't read it, I haven't seen it, and I've been home all day and looking at my emails, so I know it had to come in late. So, you can vote, as a body, I think you're asking the wrong people to vote, I think you should be asking your colleagues. Now, we can go ahead and vote on it, first of all, and let it go like it goes. Let's vote.
Well, we, and we can't vote, it's not on the agenda, so, um, so we have to bend the rules and then have a motion to do that. I'm just trying to find out from the, uh, from the body, what their discussion was, I was just asking, for whatever reason, I got feedback, somebody can.
Someone, please turn off their cell phone, or the, or the, or you?
I don't have mine, though.
Okay, you have one or the other, please.
Okay, so, um, I'm muted, everybody, um, so anyway, um, I was just asking what the pleasure of the body was in order, um, to vote, um, on this today, um, and so since it's not on the agenda, I'm gonna ask that we move on, um, to the next item, and I'm gonna unmute everybody, so the city council can speak.
Mr. President?
President.
Yes.
Yeah, we got about three seconds, while I try to speak closely. The, the, the resolution to approve the Detroit Regional Convention Authority was never presented to us. It is a state law, it's, it's not a simple matter, and it never been brought forward, and it's, and we should not even be discussing it. Thank you. We need to have a report.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
May I address Mr. or Mr. Pro Tem on that? Because we, we have the Department of Public Works, and it is the Detroit Regional on this agenda, but they pulled out, and that is now North Bay that we're talking about, we have to focus on what's going on on this meeting. Detroit Regional is not can, up for consideration, North Bay is.
North, uh, are you finished, Councilwoman Peetla?
I am.
Okay, North Bay is not on this agenda tonight either, um, so I'm gonna ask the clerk to go to the next item.
Okay, I have to unmute myself, uh, this number five on the agenda is from Finance, resolution to authorize the mayor to recruit candidates for the vacant finance director position between the salary range of one hundred and ten thousand and one hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay, we talked about this in detail last week, so can, um, is there a motion to vote on this?
So moved.
Is there a support?
May I speak?
No, no, uh, I, this is, is, is city council deliberation, you spoke last week in the study session, Deputy Mayor, so I'm just trying to, um, get on with this item, so there's a move by Peetla, is there a support? Okay, saying none, the motion fails, Mr. Clerk, what's the next item?
Next item on the agenda is, uh, resolution to approve the calendar schedule for the timing of performances provided by Hawk Construction is amended to reflect March third, twenty twenty, as the date approval of architectural and engineering services, May tenth, twenty twenty, as the estimated date for completion of core design services, and July fifteenth, twenty twenty, as the estimated date for completion of bid packages outlining preliminary scope of work.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Council President?
Yes, Attorney Sharp?
I was just gonna say, I, I would be a little reluctant to enter into something like this when, because of the virus, um, there is not business as usual, so how could you actually hold them to these dates in the event that, um, entities are not working, uh, I, I would just, um, keep, be mindful of. I would just keep be mindful of that. There is not it's not business as usual at all.
Mr. President.
Are you really going to enter into this commitment with that in mind?
Okay, are you finished, Attorney Sharp? Okay, Councilwoman Peela.
I believe I heard the governor say last week that they are allowing for construction that is already in ongoing to continue. This would be one of those items that is ongoing and it can continue.
This hasn't started.
Council President, if I could be heard.
Yeah, I'm going to recognize you in a second, Mr. Gibbs.
Thank you.
My thought process was this, when we approved the architectural agreement, they were supposed to give us some true cost and some other things. And the finance department was supposed to give me what portion of the city's general fund could pay for at the end of the year, could pay for the construction of the Phoenix Center. That hasn't happened. And until I get some concrete answers on the finance thing and how it's going to be paid for, I don't want to encumber any additional money on the city's behalf. And the problem with the virus being here, with schools being closed and other things, I just don't know the feasibility of the work happening if the city goes into lockdown, shutdown, or whatever for the foreseeable future. So then I'm going to recognize Mr. Gibbs and then any colleague that wants to speak on it. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening to everyone. We were not able to share this short presentation last week. So I'll be brief, Council President, but I wanted to get some detail. One is, what's being presented tonight is not a request for a budget or money or an allocation or a commitment. It's a very, very procedural step that is is important. So a couple of points. One is regarding the ongoing work at the Phoenix Center, the Architectural and Engineering Services. We've been successfully able to designate not only certain DPW members that have been assisting from Mr. Ringo's office, but also core personnel from IDS and OAK as essential workers, following the exceptions of the public executive order given by our good governor, so that there's ongoing activity and continuing work in the architectural and the scope of work that's been defined in what this council approved. And so the fact that COVID-19 and the declarations been placed by our governor and others, and even if the city were to go into further lockdown, continue to be under the accepted worker status of those particular as critical public infrastructure. And we've gotten all of those approvals. What's before you tonight is an important aspect of the ability for myself acting on behalf of this good city and this good council and the mayor's office to continue to drive forward on some critical aspects. The agreement that the city has says that within 24 months of the effective date of the agreement in court, the city should complete all necessary electrical lighting, elevator and serious structural repairs to the deck, and it has following stages. None of that has has really commenced. The architectural, we've already been given a notice of anticipated breach. And due to the fact that we're not moving forward to extend the contract with actual party litigant, the drywall company for continuing maintenance, this puts us into another aspect of anticipatory breach, actual actual breach of those agreements. What this is doing is it's moving the timeline of the city's ability, as I have stated at the meeting, to approve the IDS contract. It's eliminating the the ability, not eliminating, it's really hindering the city's ability to confront how it would like to deal with the obligations it's committed to in those court documents. This aspect of the timetable that's been approved notices that as of March 20, when this was moving forward, and we did this with OAK, we're already four months projected late on the design phase of this going forward, pushing the bidding and awards into July, which is the resolution that's before you. We have an obligation as a city to complete work by November. For this city to be in a position to defend itself against the damage claims and the other penalties that are embedded within that that agreement also by the court, we need to continue to have a timetable that OAK and IDS, but more importantly, when we get to bidding and awards, those companies that would have the opportunity to accelerate in material product production, accelerate in the elevators, accelerate in the electrical for the tunnel, they need to know that we've committed ourselves to a structural timeline that the city is obligating, not that we're obligated to pay for anything, that we're obligated to contract anything. All due respect to our good counsel, Sharp, this is only committing ourselves to put myself on behalf of all of you into a structural position to drive, not only getting this work done, but putting you in the strongest defensive position so that you can make all the decisions on how you want this done. You notice, and I know this slide is hard to read, it's not intended, it's showing you that the projection of this project, it can get caught up, but now we're getting increasingly further and further and further behind. The further we get behind, the absence of a maintenance contract and notice of anticipatory breach, you're going to put yourself into a position that that you'll become less and less defensible to the ultimate outcome of what this timeline is. We're down to seven months for this. So I'm very confident that we can accept this. I'm asking you to approve a resolution. You can hear a little urgency in my voice. All of you know me, to provide you as much detail and as much aggressive support as I possibly can to put this city in the most opportunistic position to not only get this done, but to defend itself. But without a time like this, we're starting to pile up our inability to to defend ourselves down the road. And so the timeline is important to give me the structural advantage to work with OAK to drive potential bidders and contractors into the process of bidding on this. If they feel that the city's not willing to move forward, they are not going to be willing to move forward so that in the summertime, I can give you a complete package that will allow you to make decisions on the most advantageous way to get this done. And I went through all of those last times. Maybe the best way is to sell. Maybe the worst way is to bond. We're not making that decision tonight. But without a compelable timeline, that the city council has said, yes, we are recognizing these delays. Without that, all of my world will assert to you, it will be increasingly difficult to get us into the bid process on a timely basis. This will result in further delays. And so, Council President, I appreciate you letting me get get all that out. I know it went a little long. I mean, I'm supposed to, I'm here for questions from council.
Mr. President.
Okay, Pro Tem Carter and then Attorney Sharp.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking at this and because this is, and all these attorney presidents, I know Matt Gibb, your attorney also, I didn't just single one out. But I'm saying this is the act of God problem. This is not a timeline that we need to be voting on. This is not life threatening. It's not an emergency. Parts of parts of this that we're trying to vote on is not clear. I think this whole thing should be shut down. We need to go into a recess until the executives side can bring forth all the documents that that created this this agenda, this minor random understanding, which is not just vague words of those actually contracts that need to be dealt with. And we were not being privy to receive those. Thank you.
Okay, Attorney Sharp.
I've said everything I had to say. I just think that you should probably resume this or take this issue up once the virus is over. But I wouldn't do it now. That's it.
Okay, any other council people want to speak? Okay. This, what's the pleasure of the body? Do we want to table this or do we want to take a vote tonight?
Personally, I say I say table it, have a recess, write a letter to the judge if necessary to let him know where we at. And then when all this stale meat is all over, then all minds could be clear. We need to see exactly what's available.
Okay, Councilwoman Miller.
President, I just have to interject. With all due respect, President Pro Tem Carter, it just doesn't work that way. We can't write a letter to the court and ask for them to work with us at this point. We're we're seven months in a two-year process where we have to move forward structurally. And the COVID-19 virus and everything that the state has done is in no way interfering with us in the ability to move this forward. I said before, I'm willing to have any number of special meetings, any number of interactions here, any of this with anybody. But, you know, at this point, we have to give an indication that that we can move, as a city, we can move this forward, recognizing that the court will not care that we had to do Zoom meetings for our council meetings. It's not a matter of asking for relief at this point. It's a matter of positioning the city in a way to get this done, to make decisions, to be defensible when we get to that stage. And it's not something that we can just delay at this point. We can't. And I know the timeline seems like a nonsensical thing. Oh, why do you need a timeline? It is critical structural work in getting this done. We've seen it in big projects.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
Can I just say?
Councilwoman Miller. She's got her hand up, but she's not saying anything. I don't know if she's muted. Maybe maybe this is, I mean, she's got a cell phone too, so. Okay, Councilwoman Miller.
You muted me for so long. I've been screaming. But that's okay. To do our fiscal responsibility, I think we should vote on it and let the vote go. That's what we hear. That is my job to vote. I agree with Attorney Sharp. We are in a crisis in this country right now. We don't know where things are going to go. It is not physically, I think, responsible to go for this. So I think we need to vote on it and let's just follow what they make. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mayor Water.
May I speak?
Mayor Water. I just said, Mayor Water. I just recommend.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, there may have been a technical glitch earlier because I had my raised hand hand raised also for the agenda item number four. But I will speak to this right now. Can you, are you hearing me? All right. I will speak to this right now. And this is on this particular agenda item, I think Mr. Gibbs has explained to you where we are with this particular item. What you are, you already voted on having IDS do the job that is described here. All we're saying is that the count, we're giving you the information that you often want to have about what that does and affecting the timeline. So what this is, is that you recognize that this is the revised timeline. That is all this is. So if there is any intention that you're voting to, as it seems to be some contention of one of the council people I heard, that in some way you're changing what you voted before. No, it is not. So what this is, is just that you are ratifying what you did in a previous meeting. So and we're doing that in the force of giving you full information, full disclosure of what is going on and to have you be engaged in the process. All right. So that's what we have to do. In addition to that,
Thank you.
As IDS moves forward, if IDS moves forward, we want to also have the council the opportunity to participate in some of the decision making. So actually, next week, we will be calling some of the council people to allow you to do that. So that's what this agenda item represents, a chance for council to be involved in a process that you have voted on, not only by the settlement agreement, but also by the IDS contract, which is now being pursued.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Peela, do you have your hand up?
I do have my hand up, sir. Thank you very much. Again, I want to repeat, the governor has said that ongoing construction is not to be stopped because of COVID-19. If we use COVID-19 as an excuse to go in front of the Oakland County judge, we're going to be laughed at. They're not going to take us serious and they are going to tell us that we did not honor our agreement, which we do have an agreement to get this done. So it's it's a poor excuse. We need to move forward. We need to get this taken care of so we can show that we are doing it. We all got a letter. We seen the letter that came from John. It was up on the screen not too long ago, a couple of minutes ago, saying that they are about to sue us for breach of contract. At least we can do is move forward and see if we can't impress them and stop this whole thing of a breach of contract. And this is one way we can do that.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, I'm just going to say this and then I'll be done. I've asked for some financial numbers about the financing of the Phoenix Center. I also asked about the eminent domain for Lot 9. I don't have either one of those. I will not be voting on anything further until that financial information is given to me. And so the rest of the council can do whatever they choose to do. But I think that for anybody to say, this is what you already voted on. So if we already voted on it, then we wouldn't need to vote again. So for, there's a reason that they want us to vote on this additional piece. And you can say whatever you want to say, but that is the facts of it. Clearly, we voted on the IDS contract and they said they were going to be able to give us the scope of work before we had to proceed. And that was one of the major reasons that I voted for it, so we could have clarity on what actually needed to happen. So that's what it is. So is there a motion to vote on this? Councilwoman Miller.
Yes, I move.
I'll support.
All right. Is there any city council discussion? Seeing Roko.
Do I have volume on this one?
Someone has to turn off their cell.
I don't have a cell on.
Yeah, Councilwoman.
Sorry, yes, I was muted.
Okay. Taylor Burks?
No.
Waterman?
Did you hear me?
I heard you, Councilwoman Taylor Burks. You said no.
Right.
Is Councilwoman Waterman still with us?
I don't see her on the chat line.
She's on here on the chat line.
No, I don't see her name.
Williams?
No.
Carter?
No.
Miller?
No.
Two, three, four, four nays, one yes, the action fails. Okay, so did you want to move on to the the next item then, Council President? Mr. President? Think he's muted now. Somebody change the host of the meeting.
Tomorrow.
It's because the council president just dropped off, I think, so it reverted back to tomorrow.
Okay.
Should I place the clerk as the host or Pro Tem as?
Would be the Pro Tem tomorrow.
Would be the Pro Tem tomorrow.
Right. I'm doing it now.
Thank you.
Okay, Rand, Pro Tem Carter, you have. See the back.
I got, I got disconnected. Randy, can you make me the host?
Tomorrow have to.
My host abilities. Okay, why is he doing okay, right? Well, Tim Carter, can you look and see if you're able to host in the top right corner?
In the top right corner?
Yeah.
I see full screen and I see, I think, full screen and I see speaker view.
No, if you if you click on the in the participant link, you can you can click on my name and make me host.
All right, I'm trying to do it now. Whoa, sorry. Need a better mouse. I'm looking for you, sir. I'm looking for you, sir.
Come from, please, unavailable.
That's Ringo, I'm sorry. Okay. That didn't seem to do it, sir. Tomorrow, I don't know what's going on, I tried to click on the participant.
Okay, and you, you don't see three dots there?
No, I see, uh, I see a telephone in, in the, in the way where the dots are normally.
Okay.
Click on more, click on more. And see if that works.
More only has, uh, stopped live stream.
Oh, I don't know. Okay, let's just proceed. Uh, so what was the vote? Um, uh.
Okay, so the vote, um, was four nays, one yes. Um, so the resolution was not approved. The, the next item on the agenda, it's number seven, resolution to vacate a portion of Highwood Boulevard right away between Third and Fourth Avenue.
Third and Fourth Avenue.
Uh, yes, good evening, uh, Council President, uh, Council, can you hear me? Okay, uh, yeah, this is along Highwood Boulevard, uh, between Third and Fourth Street. The, I'll, I'll skip to the next, here it gives a better illustration. The north is straight up on the graphic and Fourth Street and Third. And the area that is blocked out in red represents the small area that has been requested by the property owner to the east, which is on this parcel right here, is asking to vacate this property right next to his. This is part of the right of way for the cul-de-sac at the end of Fourth. This, uh, portion of vacating does not open up direct access from Fourth to Highwood that was still maintained. There is no utilities that exist, uh, according to DPW and also, uh, Water Resource Commission. And, uh, the petitioner, Mr. and Mrs. Martinez, who, uh, lives right next door to the east, has been maintaining this small piece of property for a number of years. And there's like existing fence line right there, if you know, if you know exactly where this is between Third and Fourth. Uh, so they maintain the area within that, um, within that fence line. Do that. We also found that, um, like I mentioned, uh, the area that they wanted to vacate is roughly about 1.3 acres, very, very small area. Um, it doesn't grant any frontage along Highwood Avenue. Uh, the existing fence kind of marks that boundary. The proposed area would not negatively affect any of the surrounding residents or, uh, property owners. And as previously noted, there's no existing infrastructure or utilities within this vacated area. Uh, Council President, I'll return it back to you and see if any of you or council has any question. Uh, the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Martinez, has been, uh, invited, I'm not too sure if they're still online, but, um, they may be here to help answer any questions. And they did grant, uh, they did receive approval from the planning commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gusterson. Is there any, um, uh, council questions?
I don't have any, I'm familiar with the property. I don't have any.
Anybody else?
I was gonna, uh, can you hear me, Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna ask Randy, is that your district range?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, I moved for the vote, I, I, I have no problem with it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, is there a motion?
I move.
Okay, it needs to support. So it was moved by Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burke, supported by Councilwoman Miller?
Yes.
Okay, any city council discussion?
No, I have none.
Seeing now, Roko?
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
Waterman? Uh, Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Miller?
Uh, yes.
Peter La?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Mr. Clerk?
The next item is an ordinance, introduction of an ordinance, the City of Pontiac Tax Exem- Exemption Ordinance for Glenwood Senior Apartments, located at 191 North Glenwood Avenue, this is the first reading. This is the Wallack Communities' request for a pilot for Glenwood Senior Apartments.
Uh, yes, good evening, uh, I'd like to just give a brief introduction and I, I do believe, uh, when I was last looking on the attendees, it looks as if, uh, Joe Hall is here, uh, and be able to answer any of your questions. If you remember correctly, uh, Wallwood Communities came before you and got a zoning map amendment for this, uh, McCarrill School Site, six acres, uh, from R1 to R3. And, uh, they have, uh, received preliminary site plan approval from the planning commission and looking to get your acceptance to, uh, approve a first reading of this pilot. Uh, we are, uh, working with, uh, Wallwood Communities, uh, Matt Gibb and is been, uh, working up and finally getting a draft, uh, over to them for their review. And we're looking to have this back on your agenda on April 14th, where we would, uh, have a second reading and get this approved, uh, for their deadline of first part of May. And like I said, Joe Hall should be online to answer any of your questions, or I can, uh, be more than happy to answer any of your questions or others. Thank you.
All right, if Mr. Hall is here, um, and he would like to say something.
Yes, uh, absolutely, uh, Mr. President, uh, council members. Uh, thank you so much, uh, for considering our request this evening. I, I commend all of you working to continue the city business in these difficult trying times, so, uh, kudos to you folks for continuing, uh, to move forward. Uh, absolutely, as, uh, Mr. Gusterson has said, we are continuing to be extremely excited about this project to, uh, complete an adaptive reuse of McCarrill School at 191 Glenwood Avenue. Uh, really excited to be able to partner on this, um, objective with the Pontiac Housing Commission. Um, in that regard, uh, a pilot is, is an extremely key, uh, tool to be able to put a development like this together. Um, specifically when we're looking to provide housing for folks that are of modest income, uh, the pilot allows for us to, uh, basically continue, uh, to charge the lower rents, but yet keep the project, um, financially viable. Uh, and also, uh, almost as important, um, the pilot also allows for us to, uh, leverage more debt, which would allow for us to bring more sources to the project, uh, to complete it in a successful manner. Whereas, uh, as most know, any type of adaptive reu- reuse of a, an existing school building is, is no small feat. So, a, a pilot in this nature was paramount to be able to do that. Um, so the pilot that we have in front of you, uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Erwin Williams has shared, um, what we would estimate the annual pilot payment, uh, to the city would be, uh, in the range of $30,000 to $35,000. Uh, today, I'm guessing there's not much tax on the tax roll for the property, it's currently, uh, basically blighted. Uh, so we would be actually reactivating the site to a community asset and being able to bring, uh, some tax dollars back to the city in that regard. Um, so with that being said, we, we certainly appreciate, um, the city and city council and planning commissions, uh, supported the project thus far. As Mr. Gusterson had mentioned, we have a May 1st application deadline and this pilot is, is a key component of that. Uh, with that being said, I'm glad to take, uh, questions and comments, thank you.
Okay, uh, Attorney Sharp?
Um, I don't have any real comments other than just to be mindful that the term, uh, on page three would be for 30 years, so. Um, just look under section nine, duration. And the ordinance shall remain in effect and shall not terminate till long as the mortgage loan remains outstanding and unpaid and the housing project remains subject to income and rent restrictions under the list program, but not to exceed 30 years commencing upon the final unit being placed in service. So, just, that's it.
Okay, uh, awesome, any city council questions?
Mr. President? My hand is up.
Okay, I'm gonna recognize Councilwoman Doris Taylor Burke and you, Councilwoman Pila, because I can't see you. They just made me the host.
I can't find my hand on the screen.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I am supporting this, uh, because it, there is a lot of work that has to be done over in that area, that, that area right now is, is a total mess. Uh, it's, it's junk everywhere over there now. I, I, I drove over there just a couple of days ago and it's horrible, uh, uh, right now, where, where those, uh, where the citizens are living. And, and to, and I'm not blaming the city because they go and pick up before they can get to the dump, it's dumped again. So I am asking for support for this project because I think it will change that area over there and, and make it a nicer area for the citizens, thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Pila?
Uh, Mr. Hall? Hi, can you explain that, what the, um, housing structure would be for the residents as far as age-wise? We've had this problem before at the planning commission.
Yes, absolutely. Um, per the, the MISTHA standards and the LIHTC program, uh, the housing would be age restricted at age 55 plus. Uh, and to ensure that, uh, we would be, uh, recording a land use restriction agreement with that age restriction on it uh, against the deed of the property and that, um, that commitment will, will be for, I believe, a 45-year period. Uh, so the property will be age restricted, uh, there will be no, and, and again, remember, this is not a HUD project. Therefore, um, it with HUD projects, I think we're, we're familiar that although a HUD project may want to be senior, they don't have the, uh, authority to do so, so you get a mix of family and seniors, which can be a combustible mix. Uh, where we're fortunate in this situation, we're, working within the LIHTC program, it is a strict adherence to the age restriction, which this, um, proposed development will be age 55 plus and recorded against the deed as that promised.
Thank you, sir. Um, I'm in support of this program as well because as, um, Taylor Burks mentioned, that is a problem, we do have littering continuously over there, we also have people that party in that parking lot that have no business being over there and this will prevent some of that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, anybody else want to speak?
I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to, uh, ask the question that. For a moment, I just want to ask the question in regards to, 30 years is quite a long time. And I have to be persistent, since I got on council, I said a number of years ago, two years ago, I believe, that I wasn't going to vote on any more pilots because the city didn't really need any more pilots. And it's not fair to the citizens to keep allowing pilots in the city planet. So in order to proceed to where I always stand, because I always like to be consistent in who I am. So I, I have no problem with it, but I have a problem with the 30 years. I think that's just a little too long. So that's my comment.
Okay, Mr. Doyle, um, if you can unmute yourself, um, uh, what are we actually voting on tonight? Because this is just the first reading.
So actually you don't have to, um, take any action. This will go down as the first reading, I will, um, publish the summary of the ordinance and after the published, publication of the summary of the ordinance, you can vote on the ordinance. I believe Mr. Gusterson said that, um, they'll bring it back on April the 14th. And at that time, you can take action.
Folks, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt, uh, but this is Joe Hall, uh, I dropped off the call abruptly, I apologize. Um, there may have been a duration of the pilot question out there, if I could hop in and answer that, that would be great, sorry for dropping off.
Okay, we're not taking any action tonight, um, if you could, uh, yeah, if you can go ahead and talk about it and then we can move on.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you for that opportunity, Mr. President. Uh, the 30-year pilot duration is simply a required duration, um, as part of the, uh, MISTHA permanent debt that would be part of the adaptive reuse of the school building, uh, for MISTHA to consider, uh, putting their permanent debt on the project, uh, which is a requirement that we, because we'd be using 4% credit, uh, it's required we use their permanent debt and their permanent debt requires a pilot of a term of 30, no shorter than 30 years. Uh, so that, that term's really been dictated to us, um, from the financing program that we have to use to complete the project, thank you.
Okay, um, so can we move on to the next item, Mr. Clerk, or do we have to do anything additional?
Uh, no, nothing additional. Um, like I said, I'll publish, um, publish in the paper a summary of the ordinance. And then, when you do the, uh, second reading, you can, um, actually move to adopt the ordinance if that's the wishes of the council on April 14th. So the next item on the agenda is item nine and it's a status update on Census 2020, communication from the mayor.
Okay, can we just mark as received?
I haven't given the report yet. I can't, uh, so this is the report that I'm, uh.
Before you get started, Madam Mayor, um, I would ask the council to suspend the rules and, uh, allow, uh, five minutes for the rest of the items that are on the agenda. I tried to move these items and, uh, y'all didn't want to vote for that, so I would ask that we, uh, put a five-minute time limit on the rest of these items.
So move for a five-minute timeline on items nine through 13.
Support, that is.
So, all right, um, so it's been moved and supported to suspend the rules, um, Roko?
So, so it is, uh, moved by Peter La and supported by Taylor Burks, right?
Yes, Roko, I'm suspending the rules.
Uh, Williams?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes. Oh.
Miller?
Yes.
Peter La?
Yes.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
So now, Mr. President, you actually need to, um, vote to, uh, uh, for a five-minute time limit on items, what did you say, nine through 13?
Yes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there support? Okay, it's been moved by Pila, supported by Taylor Burks, any city council discussion? Okay, seeing now, Roko?
Williams?
Yes.
Carter? Okay, Miller?
Yes.
Peter La?
Yeah.
Taylor Burks?
Yes.
All right, what's the vote, Mr. Clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry, one, two, three, five yeas, no nays.
Okay, all right, uh, which moves us to item number nine, Madam Mayor, uh, Mr. Clerk, if you can keep time and then everybody will be muted at the five-minute mark. So, Madam Mayor, you had a floor?
All right, Mr. Clerk, so just to explain to the, uh, public, uh, citizens, what that means is that, uh, we have five minutes for issues such as the status of the census, which I'm about to give. Uh, a lot of questions that we were going to answer about the trash collection change, uh, and, uh, to answer some questions from the public that they've been asking us to do, we're going to do that. That was one of the agenda items. The other agenda item was, uh, we've been trying to get people to, uh, get a virus update. There's a lot of change, a lot of things that are available to people, a lot of information that the public, uh, deserves to have. Uh, and we're going to do that as part of that presentation, that was one of the agenda items that we were going to present. And of course, the, uh, last one on the agenda for today was the legal update, and that was presented by Mr. Chubb. The lawsuit that was brought by council against myself and against, uh, the whole Jim Markle Law Firm was of course, uh, uh, lost by the. uh, was of course, uh, uh, lost by the council. The judge did find in favor of the city wholeheartedly. Uh, it's just sad that that could have been settled way before, uh, and that we spent another two hundred thousand dollars uh, on, on a lawsuit, uh, after our first lawsuit. So, that was going to be reported, and I, I guess, uh, you know, council, of course, uh, may not want to have the public know about that. But it is our job to let the public know what has been decided by the court. And that was to say, as you said, Council President, that, uh, you didn't, uh, you wanted to decide, have somebody decide what was the, uh, separation of the branches of government. And the court said all you had to do was read the charter, so which is what we had done. So unfortunately, we spent the taxpayers' money, another two hundred thousand dollars. And that's probably what you don't want to hear, not only where we are in the five minutes, but it's very obvious that, uh, we couldn't get through all of that in five minutes. So, if that was the attempt not to hear that, not to get that public out in information, then, uh, we'll have to find another way to do that. Because the public deserves to know, they have the right to know. And we want to make sure that the public is aware of accountability for who represents them and how, what's they're doing with their money. So, to get back to the census, which is the most important issue, and whatever, um, whatever time we have left in that five minutes, um, we'll use that. How much time do I have left, Mr.?
Madam Mayor, you did not stay on topic. You were supposed to be giving the census, uh, update. And you decided that you didn't want to talk about the census, Madam Mayor. So, listen, hold on, no, no, Madam Mayor, listen, listen.
Do I have the floor?
Listen, no, you don't have the floor, because...
There is freedom of speech, Mr. President, the freedom of speech in which I'm supposed to allow...
It's not a freedom of speech issue, no, Madam Mayor.
I will speak about the census.
You're not germane to the agenda. I will mute you if you cannot stay on topic. If you want to talk about the census, I will allow you to continue. I don't know, you used up three minutes talking about...
Well, I'm trying, how much time would you just use up?
So, you used up the legislative update, so do you want to talk about the census now, or we can give you...
I would like to talk about the census, and I will, and you can subtract the time that, uh, Mr., uh, Council President interrupted my statement. All right, the census, uh, is moving on. By now, um, everybody should have received the census reminder that you can do the census online. This is the last day to do it online. Uh, and then April first tomorrow starts the kickoff of the rest of the census campaign. So, it's so important, and I know there's a lot of attention right now to the coronavirus crisis. Um, we want to let people know that we are here as the city government, still functioning, doing the things we need to do. But, uh, the most important thing is to stay safe, stay well. But also, while you're home, uh, remember, please do your census. Now, right now, the reports from the census for the people who have done it online before, uh, the April first kickoffs, um, is, uh, very good. And we're running ahead of where we were ten years ago, which is what the work of the Census Committee was supposed to be. So, I do think the very large Census Committee and all the people who are working with us and all the people who've had events, uh, and some of the events had to be canceled, of course, because of the shelter-in-place order. But we are pursuing with that and because some of the, uh, some of the activities to support the census, such as the door-to-door that was going to be done by the workers of the National Census Bureau, has been, of course, uh, pulled back because of obvious reasons. So, we are substituting other kinds of activities to make sure we're still reaching out to people, uh, for the census. So, everyone is affected by the census, you know, whether it's school lunch feeding, whether it's, uh, maintaining our roads. In some way, the census and the money that that will bring by the count we have as a city will determine our share of the funding for that. So, it affects everybody. Uh, eighteen hundred dollars a year for each person is a lot of money in a city budget. Uh, eighteen thousand dollars as it represents for... All right, so, fill out your census.
The next item on the agenda was the trash collection update.
Uh, good evening again, Council, this is, uh, Dan Ringo. To update, um, everyone on five, uh, topics regarding our sanitation, uh, operations as we deal with the escalation of COVID-nineteen. And that is, uh, the trash collection, there have been no changes to routes. However, we have put some information on our website where we've asked, uh, residents to please continue to bag all trash and leave room, uh, due to there's been an increase in parked cars because many people are in bloom during the day, uh, because of the shelter-in-place order. Uh, operations regarding bulk, we've suspended bulk operations, um, through the end of April because we have, um, some extreme staffing shortages regarding bulk, and we wanted to prioritize our operations and we wanted to stay focused on the trash. Yard waste has been also delayed until May first as well. Uh, as far as our cart delivery for people that need new carts, we've had no changes in that as well. And there's been no proposed changes for the free landfill day. So, cart delivery, landfill days, and our trash collection remains as pre-shelter-in-place and pre-COVID-nineteen, um, um, situation. It's just our bulk and yard waste, and that's because of our staffing shortages, uh, with sick outs with, uh, advanced disposal. And I'm on the phone with them on a daily basis to see when we may be able to, uh, run a few of those days when we have people returning to work out there. So, just, we made those updates on our website and to the voicemail system if their residents were to call regarding any of these issues, uh, sanitation. So, thank you for the time.
Okay. Next item on the, um, agenda is a, a notice regarding services provided by Oakland County Water Resources, uh, Commissioner. Did you just want me to read that notice, uh, Mr. President, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, notice regarding services provided by Oakland County Water Resource, Water Resource Commissioner. Um, I hope all is well. Please find the updated information related to the Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner Office. Our billing office is not open for the public to make walk-in payments. Please see information, please share, I sent copy to Mayor, Council as well. It is posted on Facebook page and website. So, WRC main office, building close to the public, available by phone, email. It's at one Public Works Drive Building, ninety-five West Waterford, Michigan, four eight, three two eight. Business hours are eight thirty a.m. to five p.m. Um, the water sewer or drain, um, permitting, um, number is two four eight, eight five eight, zero nine, five eight. Soil erosion, two four eight, eight five eight, five three, eight nine. After-hours, emergency safety dispatch pollution hotline, two four eight, eight five eight, zero nine, three one. The, um, Waterford Billing Office, um, I mean, WRC Billing Office, building close to the public. This is the one that's on Dixie Highway in Waterford, twenty-six, thirty-six Dixie Highway. Their, uh, business hours are eight thirty a.m. to five p.m., and that phone number is two four eight, eight five eight, one one, one zero. Two four eight, eight five eight, one one, one zero. Or you can reach them by email, and that email address is WRC Billing. So, W R C B I L L I N G at oakgov dot com. Um, and it says, uh, payments, please, no cash, can also be placed in the drop box outside the billing office at any time. Thank you.
Okay.
So, now you're on to, uh, the Corona's update, uh, number twelve, and the mayor, uh, is supposed to, uh, present.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I'm ready to do that. And as, uh, we have all been in the shelter-in-place, uh, stay-home, stay-safe order under the, um, Governor's order, Governor Whitmer, uh, we have been, uh, checking out and reaching out, uh, to people, number one, to make sure as a city that we were operating under those guidelines, and we have done that. Uh, and I want to say, even in the face of the emergency, my first concern, uh, and we want to let out to the public that we are here to serve you, uh, the public, and we have continued to do that. So, although, you know, the facilities are opposed to the public as are required, we can continue to perform all essential services, and all our city departments are still available uh, by, um, numbers that I can give you on now or that are available. And that we continue to put all the information on the website to keep people apprised of what's going on and, uh, what is happening, uh, in the city of Pontiac and the county. And pass along important information for people to be aware of that. So, as I said, City Hall, we can still, uh, access all the services that we consider essential to provide for the people. And, uh, you can reach us by these numbers. Every department has the main, uh, number. Uh, and if you dial that number, uh, and you can reach it by calling the main number, two four eight, seven five eight, three thousand. Uh, so you can access, uh, any of the city departments that way. But also, I have established a hotline number, uh, for immediate access and for people who have general questions, you know, things that are, uh, wondering what's happening in the city, uh, where you can get, uh, uh, food distribution, uh, some of the new regulations that are coming down, some of the economic disaster relief that's a bit awarded now by the federal government. And yesterday, we also received a notice that the county was going to offer small business support. So, we have that up-to-date information. And if you want to call the hotline number, if you're not sure what resource to use, then that is available from nine a.m. to six p.m. It's answered, answered by one of the executive staff. And the number is two four eight, seven five eight, three three, uh, zero zero. Once again, for those who can't see the screen, two four eight, seven five eight, three three zero. Now, in addition to that, we want people to know that, um, uh, there is, uh, um, going to be help from a lot of agencies now. Uh, the city did cooperate with a couple of the nonprofits and writing grants, uh, and we got grant funds awarded. So, there will be a, a lot of money available for food distribution. And three of those, uh, organizations that get those grants are Lighthouse, um, Central Multicultural La Familia, as well as OSHA. Uh, so they are now staging that, and we've also worked with the Governor's Office, uh, to have the National Guard. And I did, uh, talk with the plans with the Major General of the National Guard just this weekend. And they're going to be available for the National Guard reservists to come in and to help with food distribution and getting supplies. So, no one needs fear, uh, that they shouldn't have to struggle, uh, if you've lost a job or have, um, you know, just, uh, are unable to, um, go out in the public and get groceries and things that we can help you. So, some of the people who are, uh, working at home because they're not essential in the city are still going to be available to reach out to people and to answer their, um, uh, questions as well as to pass on information about how you can access some of the food distribution and also some of the economic, um, aid that's going on, that's being offered, uh, by the federal government, uh, by the passing of that supplemental appropriation, as well as now by the county. So, we will answer those questions, and they're also on the website. We're updating that website with information almost daily, uh, as well as the Facebook pages and as well as we will do, uh, periodic PSAs. So, that is available to the public. Once again, we're here to serve you, but we want everybody to be safe, well. And, uh, if you have questions, um, can reach out to us, uh, and we will give you updated reports very frequently. Um, and also, we have some other slides here, let me...
That's your, that's your time, Mayor.
So, okay, that's the unemployment insurance.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, which brings us to public comments.
No, 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 there was, there was one other item on me.
Yeah, that brings us to public comments. The mayor gave her, uh, legal update on the case, um, so...
No, that was not, that was not, that was not the coverage. I was just expecting the time frame, so...
Public comments, so, public comments, Mr. Clerk.
Okay.
And the cover and the legal, you noted that she only talked for three minutes, so I'd at least like the remaining two.
You, uh, Mr. Chubb, you can have the remaining two minutes.
I'll say yes, two minutes, okay?
Yep.
Thank you, Council President. So, as this council will recall, they initiated, uh, a request to the city attorney last year to move the cable department under the city council. At the time, I said that was impermissible under the charter. Uh, nevertheless, the council then sought an independent legal opinion from Clark Hill. And then, based upon that, uh, apparently inaccurate information, authorized a lawsuit against the mayor, myself and my law firm. The court, in that particular portion, ruled the city attorney is correct that pursuant to Michigan law, any ordinance that violates the city charter is invalid. The court finds that the ordinance requested by Resolution nineteen-three-six-nine will likely violate the charter. And it noted, "The charter mandates responsibilities for performance of all executive or administrative functions be assigned to the executive department," I'm sorry, "to the executive branch. An ordinance which violates the city charter is, uh, invalid as a matter of law." As a result, it dismissed that. Um, moving on to the second portion of the lawsuit. The council had approved a provision for fi- for hiring of the legislative analyst, uh, in this current fiscal year. Although the mayor was moving forward with the proper and responsible process of doing that, the council thought she was moving too slowly and initiated legal action to force her to hurry up the process. And the, um, portions thereof, the court denied that and said the court will not micromanage the hiring process when the mayor has already performed her clear legal duty by posting the position. And so, the important portions of these rulings is that they vindicated both the action of Mayor Waterman and the actions of myself, and also noted that the council that you now, in total, probably spent four hundred thousand dollars on initiating and for initiating suits that we now have to defend has again provided you with an apparently incorrect direction.
Time.
And as a result...
That's your time, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. All right, public comments.
Okay, uh, we received one public, uh, comment. It's from, um, Benjamin Plasman, and it reads as follows. "The, um, twenty-twenty census has recently begun, and the theme for it is 'Everyone Counts.'" According to the state of Michigan website, a city can lose up to thirty thousand in federal and state funding for every person that goes uncounted. That is why it's very important that we in Pontiac ensure that every single person is counted. Also, many of you may have received your census information in the mail. If you have not received it or have not yet submitted it, it, you can submit it online. Also, if you go to mytwentytwencensus.gov, you will be directed to the census and can easily fill it out there. To date, thirty-four point seven percent of the people in the United States have submitted their census. In Pontiac, thirty-four point two percent of eligible residents have submitted their census. That's remarkable progress. Let's keep up that momentum going and remind our friends and neighbors to please fill out the census. Again, the website is mytwentytwencensus.gov. Thank you. That's the, uh, end of, uh, public comments, Mr. President.
Okay, um, so that brings us to closing comments. Can you please set the, uh, the timer, uh, Madam Mayor?
Mayor, can you unmute yourself, please?
How do I have to unmute her?
Think so.
Okay, uh, give me a second. Okay, there we go. Okay, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I was, uh, going to just continue on the theme of where I had talked about the, um, coronavirus emergency has just occupied a lot of bodies, a lot of people's intentions, thoughts. Um, and we are, uh, exerting a lot of effort to make sure that we are reaching out to people. Uh, there's a lot of anxiety, panic, um, and we feel that as the city government, one of the things I want to do is to support people, uh, and one of the ways is to give them information. So, we have done that by a lot of the social media and the different platforms that I've talked about already. So, I gave out the hotline number earlier, two four eight, seven five eight, thirty-three hundred. Uh, and, uh, we will continue to give you new information as there become other resources that are available. I also wanted to point out the fact that we are giving a lot of small business support. And also, which I didn't get a chance to present earlier, but we do have a list of the restaurants, for example, that are open, yes. And they want us to know that, uh, even under the order, they can have takeout and delivery. So, we're going to support them, and we have on our website as well, the number of restaurants that are reaching out and they're asking us to remember, uh, to call them, uh, to use their services. You know, they employ a lot of people, and they affect a lot of jobs. So, they are in Pontiac, proud to be in Pontiac, and, uh, they are struggling to stay open, and I think we should support them. Uh, so, maybe all that small print was, uh, hard to read, but, uh, we've also put it on our website and our Facebook pages, so I do encourage people... So I do encourage people to look to that and also to support the businesses that are able to be open but still do that in a safe way and in accordance with the governor's order. So as we turn a little bit away from the coronavirus crisis, I would also say that people are finding unique ways to celebrate one another. And I did, was part of the representation from the city for what they called a virtual bicentennial toast. We have a bicentennial condition that is helping to celebrate Oakland County's 200th birthday. And the official date of that was Saturday. So a number of us from all the communities in Oakland County did have a virtual toast by Zoom just like this. And it was quite a unique experience. So we were just as vivacious, although far apart. So that's just one of the ways and I just wanted to not have the bicentennial birthday of the county not be recognized. And we were there also representing the city were Representative and Pro Tem Carter and the Senator Debbie, Senator Gary and Colleen Peters, as well as many others from all the cities in Oakland County.
Thank you. Attorney Sharp.
I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very, very brief. Any services that the public needs from the city clerk's office, we are still available by telephone. And the clerk's office phone number is 248-758-3200.
Okay, Councilwoman Peetler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not muted, am I?
Your live.
Okay, fantastic. One thing I want to say as one of the caregivers, do not let COVID-19 scare the daylights out of you. You should be doing the same thing as you always should have been doing and that's washing your hands frequently. Keep your hands away from your face, which I am very bad about. Make sure you get plenty of rest, drink plenty of hot liquids because I understand that the hot liquid will also kill the virus. And/or do like my grandsons, breathe in the steam. Mix it with lemon and onions, oranges. It smells good. But that is, that is my one suggestion to you. Yes, we do have code enforcement that is out in the streets. I have ridden my streets for over 30 years. I'm in my car. I'm not in any danger. I'm in more danger going to the grocery store than I am when I'm out riding around. So I would hope that, Madam Mayor, you have code enforcement continuing to ride in those beautiful cars and trucks that we purchased for them on the taxpaying dollars. With that, Mr. President, I conclude. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Doris Taylor-Burks.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to give my condolences to Pastor Jones and the loss of his wonderful, beautiful wife. Sister Joanne Jones has gone on to glory and want him to know that me and my family is praying for him. And I just, I guess it's hard for me to understand that City Hall has people working in there every day. And everywhere else, people are calling me every day that live other places and they are surprised that we are, we are down. You know, and, and I don't know what to tell them because I told them, well, you know, the council doesn't run anything, you know? So I do pray for those ones that's in there working because I don't know if the building's been cleaned or anything. So I pray for, for you guys and I wish you the best. Thank you.
Okay, are you finished, Councilwoman Taylor-Burk?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to say my condolences out. There's been so many in the last week that it kind of really had me kind of down a little bit here, but I know God is good. I want to start out, Mr. Joe Wood. Mr. Wood, I'm really gonna truly miss him. When I first started out in politics and working with the city, Mr. Wood was always there. And he was a good man. He really was. And I'm truly gonna miss Mr. Wood. My condolences to Pastor Jones, Sister Jones and my heartfelt condolences to him and all the family. Also, a lot of people probably maybe know McKinley, but McKinley Jones. I need this opportunity. I want to give a shout out to his family and say that, you know, I'm gonna miss McKinley Jones. So it's just hard, but you know, they gotta leave. But I also want to go on to regards to the attorney fees. I have to get that out, you know, the mayor keeps throwing up the attorney fees. I want, I want the citizens of Pontiac, I want you to go on the website and look at how much money the mayor spends on attorney fees. It would make out like a joke. Over half a million dollars. Look, just take a look. You don't have to believe me. Just take a look. He had attorneys parading around her like she's some rich person and his taxpayers' money. And it really infuriates me. I'm just going to be honest. That's the only way I know how to be with my citizens, be honest. So let's don't start talking about the money. Because you spend way more money for attorney than any mayor I ever seen come into the city. So we don't want to go there. Also, I wanted to mention about, what was it? Oh, the coronavirus. For all my residents in the city of Pontiac, please, I implore you, please, this is serious, serious. I know people that I have lost personally. I know people that are sick. This is real. This is the real deal. Please stay inside and do not go out unless you have to. Because I have never seen anything in this country like what I'm witnessing right now. So I'm asking all my residents, not just five, District Five, but all the city of Pontiac, please take it serious and stay inside. And as for that, I do, I do briefly want to mention in regard to Dr. Taylor about the building. I do, Dr. Taylor, concur with you. I believe that the employees come first. Most everyone has gone home with laptops and working from home. And, and, and I'm sure a lot of people know there are some employees that have been diagnosed with the coronavirus. And I'm asking the mayor publicly to please get those buildings cleaned. The City Hall, for the Pontiac Youth Center, because I don't want to call people names out, but you know, it's all over Facebook. People are calling me and asking me about it. Please clean the buildings. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Pro Tem Carter.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I guess I won't be long. I'm not going to change my point of view because all these financial matters should not even been dealt with right now. We don't have public input. I know we have a number, but it's obvious that we would have more public input. They probably aren't able to chime in, chime in properly. I see if I can help do a better job for this next week. Well, and I heard Councilwoman Miller, I believe, mentioned about all the attorney fees. And all those attorney fees are going right through the executive office that they're doing everything they can to push that bond through, irregardless of how we vote. And I will say again that I would not support that bond option, especially for the Phoenix Center. All these men around the understanding are over and beyond what we talked about in the lawsuit. Nothing else should be dealt with. And as, and as far as on them, on them don't have a leg to stand on. It's not a business. It is nothing they're doing that is essential. If the water main, it was broke, yeah, I can understand you can work on it. But, but all construction was not working. So I would like for the mayor at least once to tell the truth about how much money she spent on the Phoenix Center. Why are we in this predicament with the Phoenix Center? And, and, and put in writing, thank you very much. That's the end of my conversation. Good night.
Thank you, Pro Tem Carter. Did I miss anybody? Okay, Mr. Clerk, you can start my time. This has probably been one of the hardest meetings, not only to conduct just because of the technical issues and some of the infighting. I really want to just talk for a minute about how serious life is. Thank you, Councilwoman Miller, for mentioning all the people that we lost. A lot of those were my mentors and other things. There are people that are hurting right now. There are people that are fearful right now about what's going on. What I'm excited about is people like the Pontiac Community Foundation, OU, Gleaners, all of these people that are stepping up to wrap their arms around the community. But what I'm asking you to do today is to check on those seniors, especially those who have been isolated and don't have human contact. We have so many bigger things than what we argue about week to week. And the fact is that we've lost human life. I've lost three or four people just in my city council district. Five or six other people have contacted me saying that they have Corona and they're having a hard time breathing. And so I'm just going to ask that not only do you pray for the people of the city, but we take this seriously. And I'm going to ask the mayor, the administration, to kind of really shift the focus of what we're doing right now to focus on the pandemic that's at national proportion because that's what leadership needs to do right now. And so I'm willing to join with you if we can focus on what really matters right now. If not, I'm just going to ask that we cancel these council meetings if it's just going to be a complaint session because what's really important right now is to make sure we save as many lives in Pontiac as possible. And to the people who are my age, 37 and under, not only please stay in the house, but be mindful of your contact with other people. I've got reports that they've been having house parties and other things that are going on. I know a lot of people have seen the video at Ruge Park in Detroit. This is really serious. I just lost one of my dearest friends, State Representative Isaac Robinson, to Corona. He was 44 years old. So it's not just a senior issue. So I'm just asking that if you can, please do everything you can to protect your families and your loved ones because that's the most important thing. So thank you, Mr. Clerk, and we're going to adjourn this meeting at 7:57. Everybody have a good night.